I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I can ask for approval of today's agenda. I will say I have a motion of second. Any discussion? Aye.
Aye.
Next, I can ask for approval of the minutes from January 27th, 28th, and February 3rd, 2021.
I'll make a motion to approve the January 27th, 28th, and February 3rd, 2021 minutes.
I will say I have a motion of second. Any discussion?
Aye.
Aye. Next, I can ask for approval of the claims for payment dated February 10th, 2021.
I'll make a motion to approve the February 10th, 2021 claims for payment.
I have a motion of second. Discussion? Hearing none. On favor, say aye. Motion carries. Thomas, emergency management update.
No updates today.
Okay, thank you, Thomas. Rocky, public health update.
Good morning.
Good morning, Rocky.
Um, well, everything is still COVID over here. So as of today, we have had 1,638 positive COVID cases. 1,506 of those are recovered, leaving us with only 132 active. So that's looking pretty good. As far as vaccines administered, I believe it's about 1,200 first doses. So we're looking pretty good there. We did receive word last week that we'll be getting 300 doses each week throughout February. They're trying to just give us some consistency so that we can work on that for planning purposes. So we'll be continuing to hold our clinics throughout, throughout the county. We completed the South Harden School District on Friday, hoping to get Actley done this Friday and then complete Iowa Falls next week. And I think that's it.
All right. Any questions for Rocky Lance?
No.
Okay. Next, I have the utility permits and secondary roads report. Taylor.
No permits for the roads. We still just have our one breakdown. And I remind people, like, if it's too cold, salt doesn't work. So we, sometimes we mix chloride with it. And if the wind's blowing, we don't put salt down at all because the snow just sticks to it and it gets worse. But just kind of reminding people that.
Okay, I'll go ahead and open, ask Michael to open the forum for public comment.
I have a public comment. I see that in the vendor claims pay, you ask for reimbursement for $460.80 for gas mileage to and from work. And these were some from last year. Since now we can do, do these meetings via Zoom, I think in the next year, six months, the county could save a great deal of money if you, if you did these meetings from your home instead of driving into town all the time and getting, getting all that mileage reimbursement, which has been quite extensive since you've been in office. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment?
This is Donna. I have a question. Why is it you put public comments in the middle of the meeting when you keep everyone muted for the rest of the meeting and don't necessarily answer questions? That does not allow public comment on things that are on the agenda. Why do you do that?
So the public comment at the specific time in the agenda would allow for you to comment on something on today's agenda. The agendas are posted in accordance with Iowa Code, Chapter 21. I think our auditor's office does an amazing job making sure that that is out there and that the supporting documents are provided. And that gives time to contact anybody that, you know, any of your public officials with questions about the agenda ahead of time. I've conferred with county attorney Meyer and he agrees with the current agenda organization.
Does he?
Do you comment?
No, I think this came up last week too. And I had made the comment that it is where it is so that you can comment on things. And we can take that into consideration at the time that we're, we're addressing each agenda item, so.
Before they were voted on.
Right, correct. Before they're voted on.
Well, it is possible that the public might like their questions and their comments on the record rather than on a phone. And it is possible that your discussion on certain subjects might raise another question, which the public has no opportunity to ask.
Okay.
No comment on that?
I think we gave our explanation, Donna.
So in other words, you're saying it's a way that you can make your decisions and you'd either have to try to contact each and every supervisor, which isn't always possible in less than a 24-hour period, or basically telling the citizens, be quiet, we don't want to hear from you?
I, I'll let you have, I believe that's your opinion. That's not my opinion or what Renee just stated, so. And conferring with our county attorney, I believe that the process is set up in a way that it abides by Iowa Code, Chapter 21. And with technology today, with email and phones and everything, that access is readily available.
Not readily.
Okay. Other public comments?
Yes, I, this is Pauline. I have a couple. Before we, before we go on in, into the rest of the things, Lance, when you talk, when you talk, you need to speak, I'm going to say it again, you need to speak up, like I have said in the past, because we cannot hear you. You do not talk loud enough. I don't know. I tried calling your office several times in the last two weeks. Nobody's in, nobody takes my call anyway. I don't know if you guys need to switch places. I know Renee has a louder voice. Lance, you must have a softer voice. I don't know if you two need to switch places. But it really doesn't matter because now, since the governor lifted the mask mandates, we can come to the meetings now. I was going to show up today, but I couldn't, I didn't get around in time, so I couldn't, so I couldn't show up at the meeting today. So I didn't get there in time. And the other thing that I wanted to talk about is, I'm assuming now your meetings are all open since the governor lifted the mask mandate and the social distancing. Correct?
No. The mask requirement for county office buildings was adopted by resolution by the Board of Supervisors and hasn't been lifted by the Board of Supervisors.
What, what do you mean? The governor is super, you, you said, when we asked about mask mandating for the county, you said that you could not do that because you were only county and you could not do that. So now you're telling us that you can do that for the courthouse?
Yes, that's.
And the court, and the courthouse stands over the governor? I don't think so.
Okay. Other public comment?
I think, I think that one needs clarity on it.
Yeah.
Pauline, they keep moving the camera closer to me, so hopefully that picks up the speaker. Are you hearing me? Okay. So the clarity, the clarity on the governor doing a mask mandate, when you're asking us to do a mask mandate on the county, we don't, we didn't have the authority to do it on the county. We always had the authority to do it in the courthouse or the public offices. And as of now, we haven't changed that authority, even though the governor has lifted it on, for the state, we have not lifted it at the courthouse or the public office buildings at this point. So that needs to be a motion for us to change that. It doesn't automatically change without our motion. If you remember, we made the motion to do this also when the governor made that statement. I just, I just wanted to be clear on that.
She's muted.
Other public comment? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and ask our guest Wendy from the State Training School to come on up. And you can give an update and introduce yourself to the community.
Obviously, I'm not meant for the little people. I'm going to take this off so we can hear you, if that's all right. And thank you. I contacted BJ just as a request to give an update to the community, local community, about the State Training School, where we are. I know a lot of times, good news doesn't travel, but bad news certainly does. So I wanted to give an update on staffing, some of our big construction progress, and just basically stand for any questions that you had or any clarification. I'm pretty, I, my mission is to be open and honest and as transparent as I can be in state government. So I'd like to see, you know, in the future, maybe we set up the time, of course, maybe a couple of times a year. That way you can update on how we're doing because it's a big part of Harden County. A little bit about myself, I started, I came to Eldora in September of 2000, last year, right in the thick of things with the lawsuits and everything that was going on at the training school at that time. I come from Kansas. I was naive in thinking that, oh, Iowa is just like Kansas. Really should be easy. I completely underestimated how cold it is here and how much snow and the fact that the snow remains. In Kansas, you might get some snow and then the next day it's 40 to 50 and it melts.
So you're loving it.
I quickly realized that I needed to get a four-wheel drive vehicle. So we're in the process of that. But previously in Kansas, I was a superintendent of juvenile correctional facilities. In Kansas, they were more corrections focused. And so I spent 18 years in working my way up from, basically like a youth service worker that's at the training school, up through the ranks and then was superintendent. In a small town in Kansas, in central Kansas, very similar, literally, I kind of felt like I was coming full circle, coming to Eldora, my small hometown of Larned, Kansas. So I was the superintendent of that facility. Kansas went through a lot of juvenile justice reforms. So they closed down, we had four juvenile facilities in Kansas. So they shut them down and then moved to one place in Topeka, the state capital. And so after the, our facility in Larned closed, I transferred to the Larned State Hospital, which is very similar to what's here in Iowa, as an assistant superintendent. And then I liked, loved working with juveniles. So I became the superintendent of the remaining correctional facility in the state, which housed both boys and girls in the same complex, which poses its own challenges, let's just say. And then through the summer, I've been in talks, discussions, and see if I would be interested in coming up here to take a tour and interview. It was kind of nice going into an interview, knowing that, well, I really like my job. So if they don't like me, I'm not out anything. But if you guys kind of like me, maybe. So I made the move. It's about an eight-hour trip up here. I did find a home I live, I bought a house in Iowa Falls, right by the high school. So a little commute every day, but let's just say the roads are really good. So that's all. I was super worried, but I make it to work every day. So that's just a little bit about me. My, my first missions on campus was to make sure that staffing was stabilized. The State Training School, I think we're right around, and John can, John Keyes is my business manager, can answer any specific questions. But we're right around 187 for total staffing on the campus. And one of the big problems, actually, you guys are well aware of, over the summer, our youth service workers, we were, we lost a lot. And we were down in the 40s, as you can imagine on campus. There were probably more kids at one point than staff. And so a lot of hours of overtime, staff were tired. And they worked, we received a pay increase. Basically, I was like, welcome to Irwin. And the same day, they had a pay increase for our youth service workers. And that was a huge help. So we're able, today, we are right around 83, 84 youth service workers. So we've about doubled it. We don't just hire bodies. We want to make sure it's the right fit because not everyone can work with juveniles, especially the most difficult juveniles in the state, I'd argue. When they can't find another placement or they go in and out, they come to Eldora. So we're right around there and it's remained stable. Our task now is to make sure that all those new staff receive the training that they need and support. Just because we have a different way of doing business now at the training school. So that's where we are staffing-wise. I included, I sent to BJ the presentation that I sat in front of one of the subcommittees in the legislature last week. Governor Reynolds put in her budget $6.5 million for the State Training School. For those that aren't familiar with the campus, we have several buildings that they're called cottages. And that's where the students stay. And we have two cottages on campus that in, back in 1989, were remodeled to have individual rooms. I kind of, we want to go to, I'll talk about that at the end, about litigation.
Okay.
I want to go to, let's keep scrolling down. Do you want to go to this slide here? Slide eight? Yeah. What you'll see on there is a couple of photos of one of our, the receiving unit, where students first come to stay. And on the left, that's an example of where one kid stays. And it's kind of a, and actually on the other side, that's where another student is. And they're separated by Herman Miller's block. So there's no privacy. There's just, it's open door. And the one on right, you'll see, can you imagine way back when, 50 to 60 kids per cottage? Guess who, so I started out as, when I was a youth service worker on night shift. Guess who's in charge? Not me. It's those students. So when I first got here, I was kind of shocked. And that's kind of been my mission to help us get. On the next slide, there is a photo of one of our other cottages that has been remodeled for each student to have an individual room. And so at night, they're secured in their rooms. A lot safer environment for both the students and staff. The next slide is an individual photo of an individual room. So I think some of the perception, when you say an individual room, that would go back to like corrections mindset with the big steel doors or, you know, kind of like a jail setting. And it's not it at all. Like, you see those two slides? This was done in 1989, but they've held up really well. And it's designed not to look like a prison feel type setting. Like, you'll see them, a regular toilet, regular sink, that type of basket. Part of that, what we're asking for also includes, so that'll fund, so we'll have a total of 80 beds on campus. That's what our cap is right now. So our bed space won't change availability. It'll just mean that 16 beds per cottage. That's how many rooms we will have. And also part of that project, we were able to include security cameras in the cottages. That was a big pressing need for, for me, for, again, for both youth and staff safety. So right now, it's still in committee. They asked for clarifying more specific questions of where all that funding would go. That's a good sign. Also, another huge part that John has helped spearhead the way is our total campus, we call it decentralization. But what it's really, you know, it's making sure that each cottage has its own separate HVAC system, independent. So if you, STS was, you know, open way back in 1872. So as you mentioned, it's all one together, one, one system, very large boilers, steam-powered, and very antiquated system. So they received funding to improve that each building will be separate. Also recently approved, that came through, kind of what you said earlier, the tunnel system, it went from all, links all the buildings together. That will be filled in and, because of course, they put everything underground in the tunnels. So moving that into where your skills are just buried underground. So it was a project that any administrator only dreams of receiving funding for. So STS has been very blessed and well-supported by the governor's office and legislature to make those much-needed infrastructure improvements. Did I leave anything out?
Perfect.
I just want to say that, I mean, we're, we're, everyone hears rumors and we've got a ways to go. My first mission is to make sure the staff feel safe. And we're working towards that. We just have a different way of doing business now. Previously in the slides, if you want, maybe move up a little bit, a little bit about the remedial, this is a public document. It's on the legislative, or the DHS website, if anybody doesn't miss this link. You can go to, we call it the litigation that went through. And part of our updates, the remedial plan is what we are going to do. So what they found in the lawsuit, they had issues with restraints, room confinement, and basically mental health services across the campus. The restraint aspect was the use of the remedial, the wrap. The wrap has been removed. I haven't even seen it. But I really want to see it because it is what it is. And uses are room confinement. So I should also clarify that these things that came through for STS are not new, not unique. Every facility across the nation has to address these things and with room confinement. It used to be about, literally, when I started, if I were mad at a kid and he called me every other name but my name, I can put him in a room. I could put, put him in a room until I was done being mad at him, honestly. But we've all evolved, different way of doing things. So we're working on improved communication and collaboration across campus to reduce the amount of time that a kid is in room confinement. That's been the major push and major just way of changing the way we do business. Also on campus, at the time, for many years, they only had one psychiatrist on campus. So one person, psychologist, serving 200 kids. That's, that's not a good outcome. So right now, we have seven psychology staff, two social workers, and we contract with medical services for a psychiatric APRN and a psychiatrist. And we do a lot of telepsych. But as an administrator, I've never had that big of mental health staff on campus. So it's a huge support story because most of our students that come in have some form and mental health issue. And I want us to be known throughout the state. If you're having a complex kid, many issues, send them to STS to receive care and treatment. That's my mission. I know you've seen probably, or if you haven't, one of the group homes, Clarinda, that was owned, you know, their private funded home will be closing. So this is me saying, reiterating that we have open beds, send them. Our student population right now, we're at 37. So about half capacity. And a lot of that is due to COVID. The court system shut down basically for several months. And just now, they're getting to where opening up with jury trials and whatnot. So we're seeing an increase in amount of kids that we're discussing as a possibility to come into the training school. So I look to have our numbers between 40 and 50 within the next month or so. So that will be really good for us. I kind of gave that presentation pretty fast. But you guys have any, or does anybody have any questions, any clarification?
You came from a correctional facility. This is not a correctional facility, correct?
Right.
Is that a hard one to change?
When I first came on campus, my first thing I noticed, I was like, wow, there's no fence. So I was like, what? But that's from, when I first started, I had an open campus as well. And no offense, and you did your, your business. That's just being, what I want to bring to it is not necessarily the look and feel of a correctional facility, because a lot of places are going away from that, but the same practices. Let's be safer and smarter on how we do things because we do have an obligation to keep the public safe as well. So that is my top priority. And again, with adding additional cameras, that's my first step across campus. We have some cameras on campus, just not all over everywhere. So with this, we have an opportunity for funds that's not coming out of our budget to make it safer.
I guess another question I would have would be, I know, I know I've talked to John on this before, but we're in public names, I'll ask you. So if a child was to run, what is notifications for the public? You have the city of Eldora here, you have the surrounding rural area. What would notifications be for them in this case?
Right now, and that's what, where, when we had one a couple of months ago, working on improving that. There, we do have the traditional, because a lot of our communities still prefer the phone call right away. We do have a, basically, citizen alert list. But we also have, and I can, I can send it out so I can go out to the community. We have a notification system. If you're, if you want requests to be notified, I will send out an alert through that system that you can either come through your text, email. So you'll get that right away. That, that has been an upgrade that we have done recently with that. So that will shoot out instantly. And because what we're going to do is send that out as soon as we have notification that one of them is AWOL. And then I'll also send an all-clear email or email text alert that say, hey, we got them.
How do you get on that list?
Yeah.
I can send, it's on the DHS website, but I'll send specific information. That way you can send it out. Because it's free, it doesn't cost anything to us or the taxpayers. So we pay the cost for the service, but it's a quick way to do it. But we'll also still, because I know not everybody had the text, email, we will still make sure that we contact, especially the ones, I mean, we start with close and work our way out. But to be honest, with the last two that ran, if it weren't for the local community being in communication, honestly, I went to, what's up, Eldora? Because I, I was getting information from that Facebook page. And we were like, yep. So we sent, in coordination with the police here in Eldora, and we got them. So working to improve that communication quite a way. And we're also, we opened it up with Sheriff McDaniel and local law enforcement. We had a meeting, talked about active shooter. But we also, my perception, right, wrong, or indifferent, has been, STS has kind of been its own entity for a long time. I extended an invite to local law enforcement, including highway patrol, to come take a tour of the campus. Let's go walk through the buildings, ask as many questions as you want. So they're very familiar with how it lays out. And basically just increase awareness and communication. So that way, we do, if we do have an event, they're more prepared, know what they're going into.
You're getting that information would be great because I consider myself close.
Yeah. Yeah. When I lived in Larned, I lived, it's basically the same setup as here in Eldora. The facility was about three miles out. But we also had a state hospital and another prison. So that fear, yeah, when you hear that, the word gets out fast. But that fear is there and it's real. So we will get that information out.
We'll get that disseminated through our resources. And I can make sure Justin and Elaine from both the newspapers have that. I know you provided it to them earlier, but I'd rather get it out there as often as possible. We have quite a few people that watch our meetings later. Do you have an office phone number you'd like to share a couple of times so people with questions could get ahold of you?
Or an email?
Or an email?
Yeah, you can, because we can go on the State Training School phone number because it'll roll over. Six four one eight five eight six nine oh six.
Eight, eight, five, eight, five, four, zero, two. And, uh, you can call that'll get you the switchboard. And then you can ask for Wendy or myself, uh, or Jason Sodders, our deputy superintendent.
But I'll also put, I mean, with that information, I'll send my email. Sorry, I had in my head myself on number nine, I don't want to give myself.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, Will.
Thank you very much.
See you here in a few months again.
Alright.
Alright, thank you, Wendy.
Thanks, John.
Alright, the next thing I have on the agenda is a resolution to award HMA resurfacing contract, Taylor.
So those are just kind of dealing with the, having the online contracts that we've done the last few years with the digital signatures. So I remember last time, we had a problem with BJ, cause his real name is William, for anyone that didn't know, and. It was, it was very difficult dealing with them, and. So now we gotta redo it, cause I had it last year with Lance, we had to redo his, and it was a hassle, and now we gotta do a BJ, so. We just decided, me and BJ, so this is authorizing me to sign the contract, so whichever one of us gets the authorization first, that's who will sign the contract. So that we can get this moving. Yep.
Make motion to approve the resolution to order. Resolution, uh, do we have a number on this? Twenty twenty-one dash.
Oh nine, I think.
The contract, uh, if you would just like to list it, is, uh, D fifty-five from Highway sixty-five to County Highway S fifty-five. And on East Street and Hubbard, that description in the first paragraph, the project definition would be fine.
I'll make that resolution.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion, a second discussion.
Just, I can just remind you, the funding for this, like, uh, seventy-five to eighty percent of it is coming from our Region Six that we share with all those other counties and cities. And the other twenty to twenty-five percent will come from our road use tax money, so.
Okay, and what was the, the bid, uh, range?
Uh, I think two point four million was the highest.
Okay.
And everyone else, there, there were five bidders under two point two, and these guys were the only ones under two million.
Okay, so significant savings. Okay, alright, any other discussion, hearing none, Angela?
Lance?
Hi.
Renee?
Hi.
BJ?
I, motion carries. Next item I have is, uh, set time and date for a public hearing for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two maximum property tax levy hearing. Rhonda, or Jolene?
Um, email Kerry, and it, it absolutely doesn't matter if there's a two percent or higher or lower, it has to be, um, set.
Okay.
So.
Did you have a date you would like to suggest?
We would have to, okay, it can't be anymore than ten, or can't be earlier than ten, less than twenty. Um, and then we've got publishing times, Fridays are usually the best time for the two. World Journal and Time Citizen, Eldora's gotta be letting out on Thursday.
Okay.
So for the following week.
You had twenty-four, is what you said yesterday.
That would be for the final budget.
February twenty-fourth.
Of February twenty-fourth, I could have, and I forgot my calendar, but, uh. Um, Wednesday would be the best. Because then, we could let them know, I got another calendar here. Cause then we could let them know this Friday. Let Eldora know tomorrow, and the other two, let them know to post it, um, and we could have a vote on the seventeenth. So seventeenth or twenty, oh, hang on, hang on, hang on. It would have to be the twenty-fourth because of that ten-day.
Okay.
Ten and twenty-day, sorry about that.
So the twenty-fourth?
Yeah.
Be good.
So I'll make a motion to set the time and date for the, uh. Maximum property tax levy for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, to be February twenty-fourth at nine oh five AM. Conference room or Zoom.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Yeah, the motion is second, any discussion? Angela, roll call please.
Lance?
Hi.
Renee?
Hi.
BJ?
I. Motion carries, next time I have for consideration is, uh, Recorder's Monthly Report. For the month of January.
I'll make a motion to approve the January monthly report for the Recorder's Office.
I will second.
Yeah, I have a motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item for consideration and approval is the Auditor's Appointment of Deputies.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Angela Silvy. As a deputy in the, the Deputy Auditor of Elections. I'll do these one separately.
Good, thank you, Renee.
I will second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, any discussion? Anything you want to add, Jolene? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And then I'll make a motion to approve the Deputy Appointment for Becca Junker as a Deputy in the Auditor's Office.
First Deputy.
Okay, first Deputy.
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next I have is a change of status from the Sheriff's Office.
I will make a motion to approve the change of status for Alec Jensen. Um, it's a promotion as a correctional officer. He's full-time, and at a salary rate of eighteen dollars and thirty-five cents an hour, he's going from part-time to full-time.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Lance, other business?
None.
Renee?
None.
Okay, this time I could ask for, uh, motion to recess. Two o'clock?
Okay, then, we're gonna recess to review.
Budget, budget items again.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to recess till two o'clock, where we can then review budget items again.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're recessed, thank you.